The workshop, we'll call to order for the 3:00 PM workshop. Let's see, we'll start with citizens' comments. It's an opportunity for members of the public to suggest the addition of topics for discussion or address topics of interest with the presentation limited to three minutes. All speakers conduct themselves in orderly and lawful manner. All speakers will be recognized prior to speaking. We'll announce their name and address to be included in the minutes. State law prohibits the mayor and members of the city council from commenting on any statement or engaging in dialogue without an appropriate agenda item being posted in accordance with the Texas open meeting laws. We were late getting the sheet. All I have right now is Linda, so going once, going twice, gone. Okay, Ms. Linda.
Great, okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Linda Bridges, 197 Lake Forest Drive. I'm speaking today wearing two hats. First is the resident, who cares deeply about the future of Morgan's Point, and second is a volunteer with the EDC. So I'm fairly tuned into city activities, and I often have to dig to find key information that tells me that we're missing opportunities to connect with residents who aren't already engaged. The recent road study presentation was excellent, but how many people actually saw it? Could we offer multiple in-person sessions with questions and answers? I know presentations are included on city council meeting agendas. They are posted online, and I appreciate that effort, but the audio quality is often difficult to hear. In-person attendance tends to be much clearer. Many cities now provide public comment features directly on their websites, including discussion boards dedicated to topics like master plans and strategic initiatives. This ensures no city project is overlooked. Staff regularly post updates, and council members reinforce their long-term vision. Residents can share their thoughts, and staff are able to respond, helping to clear up any confusion and foster transparent dialogue. Our friendly neighbor's Facebook page is great for lost dogs, but I've seen a lot of well-meaning but inaccurate information shared there. A centralized, city-managed space could help keep everyone better informed. Regarding the 24th strategic plan, I applaud the council's goals, and I look forward to hearing where we stand on these goals, especially the goal to reevaluate and determine next steps regarding the city-owned 35 commercial acre property. Your goal is to determine what comes next. Fits perfectly with the EDC's request for clarification on the future use for this property. The parcel represents a major opportunity. If used wisely, it could generate revenue that helps us fix infrastructure without raising taxes or passing new bonds. Morgan's Point is full of potential, but realizing that potential requires bold decisions, clear communication, and a commitment to economic vitality. I hope the council's updated strategic plan will reflect this potential. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we'll jump right into the regular agenda. We're blocked for about two hours today, and the purpose of this workshop is, I'm gonna roll both these, summarize to everybody that doesn't have this or maybe watching or watch them later. So today, we've got two discussion items. Discuss changes and updates to the 2024 strategic work plan and work to develop a 25-26 work plan, and then discuss a 25-26 capital improvement projects, or the capital improvement project. So council, this one, this one is gonna be open discussion for you guys. Dennis, I'll let you lead in if you have anything, and then I know Dorothy's got stuff, and it's just, away we go.
Mayor, City Council, one thing I wanted to highlight, and you'll see it coming next week if everything goes according to plan. CIPs, of course, you all, I know this is a little out of order, is it all right if I go to number two? Okay. Discuss fiscal year 25-26 capital improvement projects. In February, you all did a retreat, and you had that discussion and prioritized 1 to 5, 6 to 10, 11 to 15, I believe it was, 15 to 20, it could be 11 to 20, but either way. The bottom line is, is those were your priorities at the time, and they could certainly shift. But one of the concerns I have moving forward with this budget, looking at some of the challenges we've had with our revenue and our, not so much revenue, expenses, you're well aware of, they change, and we've been trying to clean everything up, and we're making progress, and that's good news. But the same process that we're going through with more confidence today with expenses needs to be the same process in revenues. And we found revenues hitting the wrong accounts. We had, when the software rolled out, we saw revenue that belonged in INS showing up under BPP. It's business, business personal property, I think is what it's called. Long story short, it didn't go where it should've gone. It's been fixed and what have you. But we need more confidence in the revenue streams that we do have are going into the right places, and I don't have that to this, at this moment. That said, we have different accounts involved in the ground storage tank payments. Not that it's wrong, but it's been better to have that stuff all go to a capital improvement fund, where the money was there, and you knew what the revenue was there, where it came from, and you knew the expenses, and it's one place to look for that one project. It's not the way it worked. We have years of pay apps going all over from 23 to 20, and I think it's 23, but 23 to 25. And it's unfortunate the way it turned out, but again, when you have a fund balance that looks pretty healthy, I'm just using the water fund in a last audit, but then you've got a major expenditure upwards to $4 million, and there's no consistency in where the money came from, or, more importantly, I should say, where it was consolidated, where it made sense and quickly referenced, it's gonna take us a little bit more time to make sure we're comfortable, at least from the staffing point, before we can recommend anything of significant nature beyond what we know for sure, like tax revenue that comes in, it's different. That said, it's, it's, the best way to tell that is let the 24 and 25 audit come about. Today, we were hoping to have later on the 22, 23 fiscal year audit done, but they said it's a draft. There's two things they wanted to run down to ground, got it. They'll, so as soon as it comes back, we'll get it scheduled for a special session, get it dropped off and received by you all, so they can do the 24. 25's not due yet, but at least we got 24. That will open the doors to where we can start doing things we need to do, which is look for additional money from other sources, mainly federal and state. So, given that unsure landscape that we know we've experienced, to what we could end up creating more of a problem, it's better, as I said last time, on these CIP projects is basically to hold the lid on as much as possible. So what you're gonna see in the proposed budget coming up is going to be just bear, what we, it does include roads, because it's, we have tax dollars, so the adware lorem is going to be covering most of everything what we're talking about, and we do generate revenue as a city. But by fund, we did not glue to anything in capital improvement beyond the roads. We did, we have a 75,000, remember, 100,000 or better is considered capital improvement, the rest of it's more of a line item that we just do work with. We have 75,000 set aside for Anse Park. And with what we're doing this fiscal year, in addition to that, I think we'll see some measurable improvement. Clearly, the residents want to see that. I've had a couple calls this last week. And then we got a contractual obligation, mainly the, the existing contracts, operationally speaking, but also with the second and final installment of the mini pumper. So those are, that's the only thing, oh, and there's a 2% adjustment in cost of living adjustment for the employees, not counting my position. But the problem with that is CPI hit 2.7, that's where it's staying right now. Of course, CPI is a little bit higher than that, but what we're looking at doing is a 2%, we just don't have the funding to do some of the other things and that. So we went with what we could, what we believe we can afford, it's your all's decision on what you think we can do. Because there's only four things, roads, mini pumper, the 75,000 for the, for the Anse Park, and the cost of living adjustment. There's nothing else in the general fund. No other projects, no other programs or services, other than what we currently use to operate the city contractually and what have you. That said, no other fund. Marina, now that's something we do need to do this year on the marina, but that's something that we have to do. It's, I'm sure it's got the funding available, but we need a good closeout of 25 to see what we have left over before we do anything major. We do have refloats that are required by the Corps of Engineer contracts, so there are some things we're gonna have to do. But that said, there's nothing in any fund, water, sewer, drainage, marina, there's nothing in any fund for capital improvement. And this is the recommended strategy, you're gonna be seeing some of what I talked about earlier, is we'll bring those projects, well, first of all, we have the 24 and 25 fiscal year close, fiscal year enclosed, so we'll have the actual numbers from the auditors. We'll also have all the revenues on a new fiscal year hitting the new accounts that's been set up, that's called the chart of accounts. Once we get that stabilized and moving forward, we'll come, the staff will come for you and recommend what's a priority and why. It's your decision what you do, and you can come up with your own list, but I think that's a more prudent way of dealing with what we're facing than it is to just go ahead and continue with CIP in any fund, other than the ones we know we're gonna get tax revenue, and we know, you know, we're more sure of that than anything else. So that's kinda like the approach forward. So this CIP is not something that we ignored, but it's not something we feel confident about recommending until those events occur. So I just want to give everybody an update on that, the budget, proposed budget, that's all it says. It's gonna have a budget narrative that goes in a little bit more detail, explaining why, but being prudent moving forward is important. Even the taxes, we don't collect 100% of our taxes, and they've had an average rate of about 98.5, I think. So we, we took that about, I think it's 2%, that we did not use of the, of the revenue from, from the general fund, just to set aside for that purpose. Not saying we won't get it higher, it could very well, but we've been, we've kinda kept all the revenues and expenses pretty much where they were already. Two reasons, one, we didn't know if it's hitting the right accounts, the right amounts and what have you, so there's no sense budgeting more for an item for revenue when it's hitting another account, and you may very well have what you're supposed to have. There's no sense, the expense side, we're a little bit more comfortable about, because that's where most of our focus has been, paying bills and getting stuff like that taken care of. So, long story short is, there's very limited things proposed in the budget for a legitimate reason, that I hope you understand, it wasn't a matter of not saying it's not to be, it doesn't need to be done, because it, all these things are important. But I think it's really important to know where you stand, and make sure that you can, that you all, as a body, decide this is the one we're gonna go with. Once you tell us by consensus, this is what you want, in a water fund, for example, staff will go back, create a budget amendment, amend that budget, get those dollars set up, and we'll start that project. It's a little bit better, more, maybe a little slower, but it's a little bit more methodical way of going about doing it, and I don't think it's gonna hinder any side, be it council or staff or the project itself, by waiting a few months until, by March 31st, they're supposed to have that last audit to us. And I think the 24, they can have that, I'm assuming, six to eight weeks, because everything's mostly, it's done. So I don't see why it would take them much longer to, I think we can stay on track from here on out. But anyway, I just want to pass that on to you about CIP. And I might add, even the road work, I know there's a lot going on right now, but even the road work is usually, that won't occur till later in the year, so you even have time to modify that if you all want. So there's, even that CIP is subject to your all's decision. Okay. That's all I have.
On the work plan, I know you guys probably all approached it, I heard Roxanne's approach to it, I think it's very similar to mine, as to how you tackle it. This document gives you a few ideas, but it's a lot of meat in it. It's basically the direction that we give as staff to move forward on next year. It says strategic plan, but it really is, has some strategy in it, but mostly it's priorities and goals for the next year. So if we want to just all look at it, I see Roxanne has hers, and I like Roxanne's approach of take it from the top. Does anybody else want to do it a different way?
Yeah, it's this, council, this is, I mean, this is your workshop on this one, so it's however.
She's gonna put it up on the screen for you, because we, that way, she can save it and what have you.
And I don't want to do all the talking, but as we go through the introduction, I just think that needs to be updated as to the process that we're doing right now. And then we spend a lot of time on the mission statement, the vision statement, and our values. And I don't see any changes that need to be made to any of those, unless you guys have changed.
I didn't see any either.
Okay. So we get into the meat of SWAT, which are the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And again, that's kind of part of the strategic plan piece. Those shouldn't change drastically, you know, year over year, but I think we do have some additions, at least I did, some additions and some deletions. You want to just take strengths first?
Sure.
Does anybody have any comments?
I had one thing. One thing I forgot, and it will relate to this probably, is there's been a recommendation through staff that we should consider, and it's actually built in to the proposed budget, a public safety department to let them, instead of having a fire police, it'd be public safety, they can capitalize off each other's strengths to deliver services, it's a force multiplier. I'm just giving example, you buy one thing that both can use, it saves you the money of having to duplicate it in two departments, just an example. But truthfully, you've got a lot of fire, and you've got a lot of police officers that are EMT, I think you even got a paramedic, don't you? Yeah, oh yeah. And, yeah, so this, this could be, they can force multiply each other's goals and missions, and you're small enough as a city, I think we could get, do that, and it looks like after talking to staff, the exec, the man-staff, I think it's, it's certainly possible. So there's a little adjustment there, I don't know how that will play in here, but it-
I think it might come in in the priorities and the goals, if that's something that we want to evaluate. In fact, I did put that in there.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So on the strengths, the only thing that I had to change on, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, well, when it comes in on the goals, I can bring it up. I was just wondering if this has been done in any other cities, where they combine fire and-
Yes, throughout the United States, it's, public safety departments are quite a few of them out there.
And there's a bunch of articles too, if you want to just Google it, yeah.
Okay.
I thought were helpful, yeah. So the only thing I am, would like to recommend that we change on strengths is I think we need to delete that our staff is tenured and multi-talented. I think we've had quite a bit of regrettable and unregrettable turnover, and I don't know that that's a strength in our city anymore, we need to get it back, so I took that out.
Well, I'm not sure, because we have multi-talented staff still here.
But is it a strength of our whole city? Right now, I think we're weak, as a city, not as individual players. But I, whatever you guys want, I mean, I'm just-
I mean, my thoughts on that is, is we're gonna hire more people. As we hire more people, we'll get that talent back.
Right.
So to me, this is a short-term thing, it's gonna be corrected when we get new associates.
We should maybe get rid of the word tenured then?
I was gonna take out tenured, yeah.
Okay.
I would, I would agree with you. We should delete that, and instead, under weakness, we should put turnover.
Well, and I'm willing to, Stephen, I don't know, but I think staff multi-talented, I think Dennis has done a really good job of cross-training, and different people doing different types of jobs, and so I'm fine leaving in multi-talented if we take out tenured, because that's probably what bothered me the most. We have lost some employees with incredible tenure. That's true.
Is that two years, is it 10 years, is it 20 years?
Right, okay.
Subjective number.
Okay. So get into weaknesses. Sam, take it away.
Turnover. Turnover is the biggest problem we have right now. It's a weakness that should be added. One that's very close to my heart is I'm terribly disappointed in the approach to the fire danger issue, and now nothing is getting done there, and that is a very serious weakness. Those of you who live on a green easement, if it looks like mine, I don't think a rat can crawl through it, it's so dense. Nothing is being done about it.
Well, I disagree with you, Sam. I, this is where we're at on it. We've got the council approved the lieutenant position, I say it's a fire mitigation, fuel mitigation, fuel fire mitigation is, I guess, what it'd be called. We got that position approved by council, he's hired, we have, we have a chipper, we're purchasing, the council approved, the chipper's to help grind the stuff down. We have a problem with vegetative debris as it stands, disposing of it, this way it can likely stay right on site. Two, or three, is BJ and I went to all the major facilities, and we're trying to figure out a way to fund the excavator with a thumb attachment, I believe is what it's called, and it's expensive piece of equipment, but it will facilitate clearing out the easements at a much faster pace than we'll ever do with chainsaws and a couple bodies. And BJ, can you speak a little bit to that, that device, and how we could use that in some of the areas that we've been talking about?
The chipper will come into play, but I think it'll speed the process up as far as getting the brush off the right of ways, the green easements, there's, everybody's green easements are full of downed trees and brush. I mean, it's gonna be a year's process to get everything cleaned up.
So is that gonna be included in the 25-26 budget?
Well, what I'd like to do, and this is something I really don't want to wait, going back to Sam's concern, it doesn't look like we're moving, and I can see it from the outside, but inside, there's been some movement. We're also trying to look at the property owners and making sure we can serve them notice, saying, look, this has been identified to, as a threat. But to answer your question, we really need the equipment, my problem was the general fund's not strong enough to handle the whole thing. However, when BJ and I went driving around, we looked at all the different water, sewer, the drainage areas, we looked at the, where else we could look at? Well, the easements as we drove by, those, those were looked at as well. But we looked at it, and I think what we could do, if council wants me to bring it back, or there's consensus for it, to get, well, two things. First of all, we want to rent it for a week, and let BJ use it, and see what kind of results this thing gets before we go out and try to make a major purchase. It could even help us with the drainage easement, drainage areas where those trees are just falling in there, and they're just slowing the water flow as well. So if we can rent it for a week, I think you're talking next week, maybe?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's about 5,000 a week, so let him rent it for that five days. If it produces what we think it will, the collection of the debris will go much faster in that kind of machine than it will the current way we do it, which-
I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you. You're not addressing the problem I'm talking about.
Okay, maybe I'm-
Those machines cannot access these areas. Those are wonderful ideas. We do have to dispose of the brush. We do have to be able to pick it up, put it in a truck. We do have to grind it up or get rid of it. We have to burn it, whatever. But you cannot access these green easements with big equipment. It's gonna take men and chainsaws.
We have, what's some of the other equipment you have? The grinder, is that the-
You can't put a grinder in the easement behind my place.
Okay, I don't-
Won't get there.
Okay, and maybe, I just want to hear from BJ, what, what kind of stuff do you have to help in the easements itself?
Wait, I mean, there are some easements that we can get in, and to Sam's case, yes, there are, behind his house, there's no way you're getting in there. That's gonna have to be done with chainsaws and manpower. I mean, we, myself and Sibley have both looked at it, and we're, I mean, that's gonna have to be done with hands and chainsaws.
We don't have to come up with the solutions today. If we can kinda come up with the priorities, if it's any comfort to you, I did put that under threats, because weaknesses are things completely within our control, and threats are things from the outside. So I put in threat of wildfires from 2024 debris, if that floats your boat. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
A lightning strike in the green easement I'm talking about would destroy this community in an hour.
It's definitely a huge-
And there are only a couple ways to get out of the community.
That's on there too, an evacuation plan. Okay, let's stay focused on SWAT if we could. On the weaknesses, I made some changes. I deleted over-reliance on volunteers. I have talked to a lot of people from a lot of different cities, and they don't have nearly the volunteers that we have at the level that we have our volunteers. I don't think it's an over-reliance, I really do think it is how our city was formed, and really, kind of the heartbeat of our city, I think, are our volunteers. And so I don't, I hope they don't feel over-relied upon. I mean, I think everyone in the city has an opportunity to volunteer for, for service. But anyway, we can leave that in or take it out.
Dorothy?
Yes.
Excuse me, I would take that out of weaknesses and put it in strengths.
I like that.
My, my first practice was in Sun City, Arizona, and when you enter the city, there's a big sign that says "City of Volunteers," and we placed a lot of emphasis on that.
Right, Linda. Okay. Yeah, okay, I like volunteerism, or if there's another word.
City of Volunteers.
Volunteers.
City of Volunteers, how's that?
Volunteers. And then take it out of weakness and add it to strength. The other thing I deleted was under-supported code compliance. I think that used to be the case, I think now with our new compliance officer, and I know this council has totally supported him and Dennis as to what's going on. So I deleted that as a weakness. I deleted follow-through, I wasn't sure what that meant, and I thought it was pretty vague. I added staff turnover in key positions as a weakness.
I think, Dorothy, when the follow-through thing, if I recall correctly, it had to do with us kicking stuff down the, kicking the can down the road.
The proverbial.
Yeah, and so, you know, like, oh, you say you're gonna do roads, but you're not gonna do roads. So I agree, that needs to be removed, because I think we are making huge strides towards some of the goals that we've had as a council.
And then I also was thinking about the lack of town halls and workshops. We've, we've implemented workshops before every council meeting, and our town, we had just one town hall meeting, and I do think that's something that we should focus on in the future. We should schedule, I don't know if it's twice a year or every quarter or something, but we should schedule town hall meetings for the citizens, I think.
I agree. So do you want to just change it to lack of town halls?
Yes.
And get rid of workshops?
Yes.
Okay. I hope you're getting all this, Nida.
And the lack of accountability for violations, I think we've made some changes.
Yes, I agree with that too.
I got rid of that one too. I said a weakness is employee morale and cohesiveness. We haven't had a chance to go into executive session, we haven't had a chance to talk about anything, but we can put that as a question mark until we get through that conversation, if you want, or if you want to add it right now, I mean, what if that's lost?
Being it's a long-term plan, I'm hoping this is very short-term, so I don't, I don't know-
Right now, is it a weakness?
It's a weakness right now.
That's what I'm thinking.
I'd like to add one. I can't tell you how many complaints I hear about our website.
Well, that's under internal and external communication, yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, and when we get into the priorities, I think you'll see the website addressed. I don't know if you've had a chance to get through it all, but I also added as a weakness, I think our systems conversion issues are impacting our operations, and that is gonna take a slog to get our version issues behind us. So I'm saying it's a weakness right now. right now, the system conversions. Dennis, I mean, I'm looking at you.
Well, I don't wanna weigh in on you all. I, I started doing that, maybe I missed, maybe I should've just stayed, uh, this is your all's meeting, your all's priorities, and I apologize to Sam. I shouldn't have jumped in thinking that, 'cause I was trying to bring up other things that we, I thought we were doing, but really, this is your all's plan, uh-
But, the, just so you know, the last time we did this plan, it was with department heads, and everybody got to weigh in. So, it is a council plan, but input is important.
But when you have department input for the, that same purpose, there is, there's usually not the same people at the same table that we have today. Usually, you'd have department heads run through stuff. They bring that to the next level for council consideration, and, or city manager to councils, and then we work on that from a different perspective. So, I agree with you. I don't think it's bad to have that input, but we didn't, we don't have that. I don't know if you, you did it last time around, got it.
Yeah, I think the department heads appreciated it too because they felt like they were a part of the process. But on, you just seemed to mention the system conversions in all of your city manager updates as an obstacle for us right now. And so, that's why I put that in there. Uh, I also added under weakness, lack of meaningful financial information to make key decisions. Hence, the twenty-five, twenty-six budget that has nothing is skinny down because we don't have the financial information we need to make educated, intelligent decisions. Okay. Anything else on weaknesses?
So, the deer population, how is that a weakness? I see that as a strength.
Dense wildlife population? So, you're on, you're on the pro-deer side?
A lot of people don't like the deer.
Yeah.
Well, yeah-
Something that we're not gonna control.
I think we all like the deer. The problem is the density of the deer population-
Right.
Is awful.
As far as traffic-
They don't have enough to eat. They, it's terrible. And people are feeding them, and it's against the law, but people do. And they're just gonna get more and more densely populated.
My concern is from a traffic standpoint and from people slowing down, when you don't even realize why they're slowing down on county road, um, at night, uh, the deer population. I mean, they own the streets, you know, but I could-
We looked it up a couple of years ago, 'cause we thought it was illegal to feed the deer. It is not.
It's not.
Yeah.
It's not recommended.
Stay corrected.
Yeah.
Yeah, I ma, I made the same comment and meet the candidates, and, uh, the lady in the audience who has her phone pulled up right now actually pulled it up then and course corrected me. So, yes, it is technically not illegal to feed, uh, to feed the wildlife.
So-
Oh, it is. I see it all the time. Oh, okay.
They do destroy cars.
I was. Okay.
There weren't as many of them.
Yeah, we, we've-
What we need is a couple of mountain lions.
Oh, deer.
Some, Matt, just as a correction, some of the things I've been reading is the deer come when they have this kind of a rural setting because it's safe for them. And they actually, they come when people come. They follow us here. So, I don't know if they were here, not very many, before we came. No, no. You're right, got me.
Anything else under weaknesses? Do we wanna look at opportunities?
Yes.
Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look through those. The only one I added that I could think of right off the top of my head, Linda, is EDC alignment with city priorities. Okay, yeah, we've talked about it. So, I think that's an opportunity for EDC, uh, to partner with the city on some of our projects. And that Temple Master Plan is in there, Linda. Comprehensive Plan is in there.
Why do we have city, team, and council cohesiveness?
It's an opportunity for us? Opportunities are things within our control, as opposed, okay.
So, are we saying we don't have that? It's a negativity thing.
Yeah, it's an opportunity to get better. I don't know, anybody else have any other comments on that? I think it's improving. Um, for a while there, I did feel like I was the enemy. Um, sorry. Um, I think it is definitely getting better under Dennis. I think he has a, you know, different attitude about working with council, um, but I'm open, whatever you guys think.
Just brought it up for discussion.
Yeah.
Well, there is an implication that it's lacking. If it's an opportunity, it must be lacking.
To me, it sheds a negative tone, but that's just my interpretation.
I, I agree with that.
I don't, you don't have to leave it in for me.
Okay. It definitely has gotten better from when we first pulled this together, which I think was twenty-three. So, if we look back, look forward. Any other opportunities that you guys wanna talk about? And then threats.
Is there anything in here that talks about utilization, best utilization of properties, that kind of thing?
You mean like these single lots that we have?
Uh, I, I was thinking more about Linda's, um, proposition and about my question about the trailer parking near the marina. There are areas of the city that we own that are not being maximized for profit.
Would you put that under an opportunity?
Yeah.
Okay.
City property is not maximized.
Or maximize, the opportunity would be to maximize our, right?
Um, maximal use, maybe.
Well, and may I suggest that if it's not gonna be maximum use for the city's purpose to get it on, back on the tax rolls, there's no reason for the city to collect a bunch of lots. Uh, if we can get, get them sold, somebody might be able to expand their yard from a quarter acre to half acre lot, maybe do something with it. I mean, it's up to you all, but I would think that if, if we're just gonna maintain lots and it's not gonna be used.
Well, those are the city lots, but I was more thinking about the areas that are lying fallow and are not being used as building lots.
But with that now being lumped into park improvements?
Well, I was referring to, I was referring to residential area. I'm sorry, I thought you all-
They're two separate, two separate issues about land-
Okay.
By the city.
How would you word it?
What's the real estate term?
Efficient use of city property?
Maximum, there's a real estate term for that, maximum use, maximum and best usage. Maximum and best usage of city-owned properties.
How about just best usage of city property?
I'm sorry.
About just best usage of city property?
Oh, highest, that's the real estate term. Highest and best usage of city-owned property.
And that may include selling.
Yes, yes, of course.
That's, that would, that would encompass all of it, yes.
Highest and best usage, okay. Good. Any other opportunities that, and, and as things, as we go through the plan, if things come up, I mean, these aren't, you know, in stone. We can come back and modify them if we want to, and anything for threats.
Well, the fire danger, you moved over to threats.
Yeah, I just said threat of wildfires from two thousand twenty-four debris, but I think that I shouldn't put that twenty-four in there. Maybe just threats of wildfires from-
Wildfire threat, yes.
Wildfire threat. Okay. All right. Now, here comes, roll up your sleeves and stuff. Um, so, my understanding, the way the plan works, is that, and I, whether you call it a priority or whether you call it a goal, there's something that's an umbrella, and then there's some, there are things underneath the umbrella to support getting us there. And I'm thinking that we need to come up with the umbrella, four to five priorities that we want to focus on as a, for the city. And under those will fall goals, which then can be fleshed out with Dennis and his team on, um, you know, what's realistic to try to accomplish. Um, we had the four goals before, financial integrity, roads and infrastructure, communication and transparency, and enhanced safety, emergency preparedness, which I still think are solid.
Yes.
Um, I did add one, and it can be probably incorporated into another one, but, and I didn't know how to word it, but council interaction and communications with city staff. In parentheses, in my mind, I'm thinking, the residents want council more involved in employee matters. That doesn't mean we make any decisions, but that means that we set policies that we want, that we, you know, work on benefits for our employees, that we have a grievance policy, that, you know, you can come to city council if you have a grievance. And my understanding is we've lost some of that along the way. So, again, I-
How about staff nurturing?
Is it a separate goal, or does it fall?
It can go under communication.
Maybe, okay. So, as we talk about this, let's keep it under communications and transparency. And I wrote some goals. Get started. Um, I think the first one was determine the underlying causes of regrettable staff turnover and take appropriate action as necessary, um, which I think we're gonna talk about in the executive session. Develop a new ordinance on city council approval of employee policies. Now, what happened, and we did this to ourselves, this is a self-inflicted wound, but Dennis came to us back in the fall, and he said, "Your employee handbook's really out of date, and I'm having trouble hiring because, you know, there's some obstacles, and I want," you just cut me off again. "I just, I want the ability to develop employee policies so that it will help me with recruiting and hiring."
May I correct something there?
Yeah.
It's not, no. We weren't following the policy that you had from twenty thirteen.
Yeah.
It was outdated. It needed to be updated, so-
Okay, perfect.
That was the reason. When I came in, there was no control as far as how they establish hiring process.
Shame on us, right.
Well, I don't, I don't blame any one person. I think it's a system failure that, that compounded itself over the years, that since this backed up to twenty thirteen.
Yeah, so, as council, we're responsible for that. And so, as council, um, we gave you, we wrote an ordinance that said, "Throw out the old employee handbook, and you can develop your own employee handbook." And what I'm suggesting here is I'm fine throwing out the old employee handbook if it didn't make sense, but I think council needs to keep, um, the approval processes on policies. So, I wanna bring back in the council approval of the employee handbook, of employee policies.
I don't think it's anything wrong with a resolution to, uh, to accept a policy. I don't think there's a wrong thing there. You, council belongs in the governance model. They don't need to be in the day-in-day management of the employees, and that's where the, the gray area is going to create problems for any future city manager gonna have. Either they're-
I'm talking policy level, not implementation level.
If the governance model says the policy will have X, Y, and Z, then that provides a direction, and that policy that you accept must meet that X, Y, and Z criteria. What, but it's, you're all-
I'm thinking something different. I'm thinking you bring policies to us all the time. We review the policy, and we approve it, or we make changes. So, I'm just suggesting that that employee handbook is a policy, and I think it needs to be, it was never brought before council, um, when it was implemented. I'm just suggesting-
What I'm saying is a resolution is, is totally appropriate if you wanna do that. What I'm saying on the other side, it was, well, it was an ordinance is what you did, and, not you, but it's what was adopted. When you have an ordinance adopted, it means anytime that you're gonna change it, you have to come back and re, uh, redo that ordinance. You just don't make it on your own. Whereas, if you do a resolution, under the, of the, what I'm suggesting, you might find it better for both the manager, who's responsible for the staff, not council, and council's direction to the city manager, so he or she understands what you want within that parameter, uh, as you should do with financial matters, with, uh, debt issuance. I mean, there's a litany of things that you should be able to provide goalpost.
Okay, let me change the wording.
Can I interject something?
Yeah.
Um, we hire a professional manager, um, for, to take care of many things, including HR. The manual is part of HR. If he can put together, or have someone put together a new manual, then the council should approve that manual.
That's what I'm suggesting.
And I'm not saying not. I'm saying, think of it as a resolution, not an ordinance.
Oh, I'm not high up on the terminology.
Because that's, that's what created the, I think that's why it was never updated.
Stay with me on concepts.
Okay.
The wording can really change.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, I said ordinance here, but it, it's not, I mean, whatever it's supposed to be is what should be here.
Resolution, huh?
Okay, so, we could just say evaluate, or, how do you want?
I think we need, I think, just be prudent that coun, council needs to do an annual review of that handbook. That's all I'm saying. Uh, and I think that's kinda just what you're alluding to, correct, Dorothy?
That's, that's a good idea.
Not that, not that we want anything changed necessarily, but just to do an annual review. I think that would-
We haven't seen it yet, so we don't, we haven't reviewed-
Well, we need to see the, yeah.
Right.
You gotta start there, and then a year after, have an annual-
You're a warm welcome. I can send you all a copy of it. There's no secrets there. I mean, if you want a copy of it, only thing I would suggest is, is that, that, uh, I honestly, and I don't wanna take you off what you're doing here, but you all really need to think of the governance model more so, because the way you're doing it's gonna create conflict. You will have a turnover on-
We've had that ability up until about four months ago.
What's that?
We've been governing the city with council having involvement in our employee policies. We say the employees are the most important thing for our city. I think we need to put our money where our mouth is, put our actions where our mouth is.
Oh, it's especially tight.
And so, I don't wanna argue about it. Whatever wording, these are goals that you can tweak. We're setting the big four, and this was just one of them under. But to give you some specificity for what we're in, and I think you have an idea.
I have a question. Um, would, um, with the governance model that we were going, planning to create, would that be the big umbrella that would cover this? That in that governance model, we would say X, Y, Z needs to be done with the employees, and is that more where we should be focusing?
Yeah.
Is on the bigger picture of the governance model instead of the employee handbook, per se?
Okay, that's a piece of it, yeah.
Okay.
Note, um, how do you wanna word that?
I don't know.
Okay.
Could I suggest you just maybe look at, maybe go under the, make that a goal or a priority, a governance model. It's not gonna hurt at all. It will help you so many ways, especially in the, in the realm of, of keeping the seat of the, of the city manager in the lanes you want him to stay or her stay, um, from all aspects of government.
It isn't keeping in anybody's lane.
Well, I-
It's just being, um, aware of significant changes being made to policy, um, that are, in this particular situation, that affect employees. Now, in other situations, you know, Mike comes to us with his policies, and, I mean, we just need to stay in the loop.
Maybe I don't understand what you're looking for.
Okay, okay.
I think, Dorothy, I would say we need, in one, under one of these goals, we need to develop a governance model.
Okay.
Okay, 'cause that's what, we did it-
That's what I wrote down.
Okay.
Yeah. The next one that I had is the city, um, the council used to be involved. Now, I'm not talking hiring, recruiting. I'm talking about involved in the key hires, police, ch, the police chief, the fire chief, chief financial officer, and the city secretary. And I would like to evaluate that. Getting back, and getting council back involved, even if it's just a final interview of those key positions. Because if you look at our finance role, how critical that is, I mean, the city secretary, and certainly for the residents, those public safety officers. Um, the buck stops with us. Um, when things go sideways, um, you know, the residents come to us, um, as they should.
Again, I, I think that could go under the governance model. Yeah, I think that would, maybe we just need to add that as a fifth one to develop the governance model, and we could talk about-
Okay, what goes under there?
Yeah, all underneath there.
Okay. And then, uh, this is minor, but with all the changes, new mayor, um- And then, this is minor, but with all the changes, new mayor, trying to figure out our agenda setting and packet preparation, especially in light of the new state, the Texas Legislature's law that starts September 1st, that the weekends don't count anymore for the 72 hours advanced notice. Some cities are changing their meeting dates to like Thursdays, so they can comply with the three-day rule. It's no longer 72 hours, it's three days. But anyway, we're going to have to address that with that new law change.
Yeah, there's, real quick, I can, what the city manager and I are doing is, we, a couple weeks ago, I think, we started trying to move towards that in anticipation of that getting pushed through, and it was, I don't know if there was ever like an official date, it was like Wednesday, Thursday timeframe, when the mayor was sitting down and, you know, kind of going through the agenda prep. We've talked, and we've tried to move that as early, in fact, I think we did our first meeting Tuesday this week.
We've been doing it earlier.
Yeah, so, yeah, spot on, we're tracking that, you know, the, a day change, that'll of course be up to council, if that's something that we want to look at further down the road, but, they get your email, thank you, and we're keenly aware of that change, so, and trying to stay on top of it.
That will affect us as a city.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. And I personally do not want to change the day of our meetings. I think we've been having the second Tuesdays forever, but if push comes to shove, we need to comply with the law. Okay?
Yeah, it wouldn't, people would get used to it, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's Thursday instead of Tuesday.
I won't be able to watch Friends.
I'm so happy. Okay, I'm tired of talking. Financial integrity and accountability, I think that stays as one of our priorities, you guys all agree with that. We still have a long way to go.
Yep.
We still have 19, 20 audits, we still have the special purpose audit, we still have 23, 24, and soon to be 25 audits. I would like to personally have dates, because it is the law, and we do have property tax ramifications if we don't meet our dates. And those dates will just have to be Dennis-driven. Getting our systems fully integrated and operational, getting financial information to us and to residents, bringing cash reconciliations done in-house, we're paying a third-party CPA firm to do our bank reconciliation still, establish court reporting, we need a court reporter, and we really have not had court reporting to council. And then I still want to keep on there, evaluate senior tax exemption or freeze. So some of those are repeats, and some of those are new. What do you guys have?
Well, I was thinking we could take off the 2021 audit and 2122, because those are finished, right?
Yeah, so I didn't edit these.
Yeah.
I just came up with brand-new goals. So, yeah, the audits are different, they're 19 and 20, and then they're 23, 24, 25.
Yeah, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Mayor, council. You can do this way, you can have the audits, and there's nothing wrong with that, and it's a good idea to find out exactly where you're at. But there was a discussion when I got here, saying you consider, or it was under consideration whether you have a compilation engagement, which is where we provide all the documents to them, the financial stuff, and they create the financial statements for you, it's not tested, not proven, so to speak, not that it's absolutely either way, but it's certainly a more, it's not a very robust approach at all. So do you all, and it was on the thing coming up later on to discuss, but you all might want to consider which way you want to go. You want audits, or do you want compilation engagements, that where we just provide the information, they come up with statements? It won't affect you either way with your grants, you're getting to the position, once the 24 is done, we couldn't do the 25 if we wanted to right now, because it's not that period. So the 24 is done, the 23, they have the draft, it's in your packets, they had two things they wanted to run to ground, got it, do it, but the 24, once that's done, we can start looking for grants, and we would be qualified, assuming that grant's not off-center, and I don't see why it would be too much off-center.
How about we change the wording to audit or compilation?
That's what I was...
Of 1920.
Well, tonight, I'm going to ask you later on, you might as well think about it, because I need direction on it, because it could be one or the other. So, because we're done with, once the 24, 24 has already been loaded up a lot of the way, it won't take much to get that one through. The, so 19 and 20 is the next one, I need to know which way you want to go, and so not, you don't have to answer it now, I'm just saying, think about that.
Yeah, because we need information, you know, what are the advantages and disadvantages, and maybe that's something that our accounting firm can give us, is a quick summary on, you know, those two years, how old they are, here's the advantages of a compilation, here are the disadvantages, same with audit. We'll be able to evaluate that.
Right.
I bet they'd do it for us in a heartbeat.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, first of all, they got an aging accounts receivable that's totally out of whack, it makes no sense, because we skipped over those years. If they would have stayed where they should have, this would have been a lot easier to manage, I think, moving forward, you wouldn't have to make this decision now.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
But somehow we jumped, we jumped over it, and now we've got a $500,000, $550,000, aging accounts receivable, that really doesn't, and it was made up in two years, according to the cash flow for that fund, so it doesn't even make sense, someone should have thought of that, I think, not you all, the accountant. So, either way, I just, it's something we want to discuss, and see if I can get some direction, but we can talk about it later again.
Yeah, we can put one or the other in after we discuss later.
Or just make it audits with the understanding that it could mean one or the other. It's your all's decision on how you want to do it, it's not mine, so if you want to say, audit...
Yeah, it would be helpful just to know the advantages and disadvantages. I think we can just change it to audit or compilation, and then be done with it. Is there anything else under financial integrity and accountability that's important to you guys? That, again, these are just kind of, Dennis is going to take these and see what the staff can get done. These are just suggestions for what we think will give the city financial integrity and accountability.
When I look at these, I see that we've done many of them. One of the things we didn't do is 1.7, we haven't had the municipal judge present semi-annually to the council on disposition of court cases, and that might be a good idea in the future, because things get, we don't know what was going on before that, so I think that would be good.
That is under there, Roxanne, on the flip page of mine, establish court reporting, council.
It's on, it's on here on 1.7 also.
And I think the first...
But you're saying, keep it?
Yes, we need to do it.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, we need to do it.
And that judge and the prosecutor, they're gearing up for the 21st, or the... So we got a new city prosecutor, judge, and up and running on 21st, so you'll have some information to be passed back and forth from here on out.
Okay.
I don't want to digress, but what about the municipal clerk? Do we have somebody to help the judge?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Nick.
This is something we've never had before, and I think it would be helpful, too, to have court reporting. Anything else under financial integrity or accountability? Want to move on to roads and infrastructure, and Roxanne, why don't you take this one?
Okay. Well, I was looking at all of these road studies, and on 2.3, I put in there, should we report it as completed? Begin monthly reporting on which roads have been repaired or maintained. Oh, yeah, that was, they, which ones have been completed? We had talked about having utilities depart, no, not utilities, what's your department? BJ, Public Works. We talked about having Public Works giving us periodic, I don't know if it has to be monthly, but...
Yeah, I added that, timely reporting on road repairs and roads...
Just so we know what you've done and where we're at, yeah.
Yeah, I had that one, too.
And we did, we are reporting to residents and publishing on the website, and telling them what roads are being repaired, and we're looking at the master plan with Temple, we've been working on that all year, so I think that's just an ongoing thing.
That's been, that's had no activity since that last event that occurred, so I'm working to find out what's going on, but right now, there has been nothing since that last action that I've passed on to you.
Okay, okay, so it's kind of an ongoing thing. And on 2.7, we did evaluate the functionality and reliability of the wastewater treatment facility and lift station, and I believe that that is in working order with pumps to spare, so I don't know if that needs to be on there right now.
We, I've had that discussion with Stephen, he's not here. Stephen, he's, he has actually got the refurbishing done on the current sewer lift station, he has the generator going in today, or the backup generator, and the pump, the extra pump that it is, that he's going to need, if for some reason that sewer lift station goes down, he knows how to do it, he said he can have it up and running in a couple hours. And he says, the only thing is, there are some aspects of each of those tanks, if you will, that need to be upgraded, and that's something he'll be working on, but it's relatively cheap. And I asked him, is there any major thing that we need to do for capital improvement for the sewer lift station? He goes, no, and he says, we're in really good shape, except for these things, and they're less than a hundred bucks apiece. So he says, really...
More ongoing maintenance than...
That's all that is, and he said that he has no need for another sewer lift station, so it's different than what we heard the last time.
Right.
But he's, he understands what he's doing, he understands how to replace it, he's got it, he's going to have it as a spare, there's no reason to spend $170,000 for a...
Save, he saved our city a lot of money.
He did, and actually, we, that generator that's going in, the backup generator, is a huge hurdle to get over, because without it, there's no way to control, you have to manually pump the hoop out if for some reason the power goes out.
Okay.
And now we have a backup generator, and they're putting it in today. Hopefully, it's going to be done today tomorrow.
Okay. And then, unless anybody has anything else, I was going to go to Parks and Rec, and we did create the committee, yes. And so I don't think that needs to be on, we've got good, strong leaders in there, their purpose and processes is in place, so that doesn't have to be there, and the current Parks master plan has been updated or in the process.
I think now that we have our new engineering firm, I think we're going to...
Not official, but it's within days.
Okay.
We had to get rid of the old...
Okay, a couple more days, right?
Yeah, a couple more days.
Two more days, and so that is in process, yes.
That will be a priority for us.
Okay.
All right, and...
Have set aside monies for improvements.
Right, and we've done that with the Anse Park, so those are, those are no longer goals in, because they're already implemented, but it might be an ongoing goal, you know.
Mayor Protem...
It's not done yet.
If I were you, I'd keep it on the radar, because Anse Park, we don't have the money to address it, grants are going to be competing between roads and other infrastructure, so you don't want to, what's called a CBG funding, be competing with that, because you're going to take care of water and sewer and stuff like that first, take sewer off that. But my point is, if you keep it on there, and you phase it in, as we've discussed with the park committee, you, it'd be cheaper, it'd be more manageable, and what we can do with this new engineer is get the conceptual design with the key infrastructure, electrical and what have you, to make sure we can grow that into what you want it, without actually working out two, three million dollars, which no one can afford.
Yeah, I thought we needed to leave it on, too, but I was just kind of proud of what we did.
Yeah, yeah.
Stephen, so, yeah.
Well, I'm just talking about the Anse Park, and there's things, the Capus Park needs work done, too, but I mean, that's one where I got two calls last week on Anse Park, so they're wanting to see some movement, they understand where we're at.
Well, it's been out of commission for a while, so I can...
I think by the end of the year, you'll have, you'll have something there for the kids to play on, the park committees talked about it, I think there's a path forward, it just, it's not going to be robust, but it's going to be a something, and it will be nice.
I think that's, that would go a long way.
So then we talked about initiating a meeting with the Corps of Engineers to discuss the future of the lake, specific objectives, what to discuss, lake levels, long-term lease or other use rights. So that was on there, and I don't know that we've done that.
I did, honestly, I didn't know, based, and this is my ignorance, I just don't know what you're looking for, because the lake levels are controlled by Corps of Engineers, it's not an option, the flood easements are not going to change, we have to get permission to allow them to, the flow easement, I'm sorry, they're going to have to say, they're going to tell us what they, what's acceptable. I do think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, the only question I would have about this is, when we're talking about these easements, the green easements, some of those are owned by the Corps of Engineers, so what rights do we have with that? That's what I would have...
I don't think we have any rights on theirs, but what we can do is let them know about the fire program that we're putting together, it's going to be very robust when we get there, and I think they will want to be a part of that. I can't imagine them saying no, but they're the government, so sometimes they don't answer the way you expect them to. But I would say that's a very good discussion to have, because it is a threat. I was just having a, I don't forget who it was, but right around the corner over here, fire access, I think it was Shane, we were talking to some people about that, and so there are discussions need to have. I just didn't know what the context of what you were looking for on that, so...
Originally, we were talking about Oakmont, because we were...
Oh, we were talking about...
Rogers Park and the Marina.
Standing the park there, and...
We were talking about how we could use Oakmont to do maybe something like the EDC or...
The Eclipse.
Yeah.
I think maybe keeping the relationship with the Corps of Engineers, so that we're familiar face when we come and ask for permission, might be the, might be the priority.
Okay.
And I know Ronnie has FaceTime with them, and so they know Ronnie.
He gets it every year, he gets inspected.
Yeah, I know. Goodness.
It would be of value to us to know what the new pipeline to the other lake is going to do to our lake.
That is available online.
So, we could just put, we want to keep a relationship with the Corps of Engineers.
Yeah.
Yeah, to discuss the lake and surrounding area.
And I think it's good to talk about opportunities within their scope of acceptance, because, you know, you've got some things here that most people don't have, you've got some of the best nature trails you're going to have once we get, we just met about that as well, and BJ says we can do a lot of that, we think some of that stuff we can do internally, and even save money there. So I think you got something that, where we can do to maximize it, have a brainstorming session, perhaps what we think, and then maybe approach them and say, "Look, these are those things, some of the things we're thinking about, what say you?" And they'll tell you, no, a lot of times it's a no, but a lot of times it's the local guy without talking to Fort Worth, so we, we'll figure out a way to...
Okay. Anything else that you had, Roxanne?
Well, I was going to add on, we need to add on about the water wells, explore, you know, developing water wells in our city.
I said evaluate water supply options near and long term.
Okay, that's, that sounds good.
Okay.
And then the other thing was the drainage issue, because that was, that's infrastructure also, and...
I just wrote drainage with a question mark, so I hope Dennis can fill that in.
Yeah, and that goes back to that equipment that has, that has an attachment, actually will help us with the drainage design of those, like similar, like you see in, like belting around the circle, see somewhere they kind of made a little ravine there and sprayed it with grass, and sure enough, that, we don't even have that, so I think anything we can do with this kind of equipment to maximize our drainage program would be a good thing to do as well.
And then, just a question, would, generators would go under a CIP plan, not in...
Depends, are you looking at for like a public safety center?
Yeah.
Yeah, you could put it under, well, right now, it was 85,000 last year, and it's probably pushing 100,000, I'm guessing, they don't usually get cheaper, inflation's still going up.
I put it under the priority, enhance safety and emergency preparedness.
That's where I think there's a lot of things that need to...
Yeah, when we get there, we could, yeah, okay. Under roads and infrastructure, I just added, we got to get that comprehensive plan done, I'd like to see that on our goals, I'd like to see the sidewalk project, that needs to stay on here, it's not a financial, but it's definitely a managerial focus. I wrote down, we do have a work order system, I don't know that the residents are that in tune to it, if they use it, it will work, but I'd like to see that marketed. And then I had the Marina, I don't know where we stand on the upper deck, and then I also said the usage of the upper deck and trailer alternatives or fee, and then under capital for Marina, I had upper deck dock rotation... or fee. And then, under capital for Marina, I had upper deck dock rotation, under infrastructure.
Okay.
Okay. I don't know if anybody wants to keep that in, or take it out, or modify it. We do have, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And as far as I know, we need to get on with that. Yeah, yeah. So I think that's a goal. I mean, we've got to probably look at that next year.
Well, we have to, I think it's a twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-seven. So, the first one will be coming up. That's one of the priorities that I would expect to be brought before council after we get the last audit, and do the reflow. Dock D, I believe, right? Is it Dock D? D first, though, I'm assuming, right? Yeah. And then, then do the other one, twenty-seven, or you might be able to do them both in the same year. I don't know how long it takes, so.
Well, I just had it on here, because I know it's on our to-do list, and I want to make sure it stays.
Well, it's, yeah. It's part of the lease agreement. I mean, we have no choice but to do it. So the question is, is, and I'm pretty sure we have the money there, but we have some heavy expenditures coming up here this fiscal year we need to deal with as well. One's the walk bridge and some other things that we're talking about, bringing walk bridge for sure.
Yeah. And what we talked about before at our last meeting, the upper deck level, use of that for trailers or alternative uses, and what do we do with the trailers? And I mean, I think we need to wrestle that to the ground. So, I put it down here. Anybody else have anything on roads and infrastructure?
I, I don't want to add something, but I wonder if we could have Ronnie here, or someone who knows, explain why the upper deck had to be repaired three times in, what, fifteen months? And what, what's wrong with the engineering?
I, I can tell you, without even having him, we had huge rains, lake went up, broke the dock. They fixed the dock. We had a tornado, broke the dock.
I know all that, but it seems to me the engineering is at fault. It's not been built properly if it does that. We're going to have another rainstorm next year. We're going to have another tornado in the near-
Maybe, maybe when Ronnie presents his capital, or at a meeting that we have time, maybe Ronnie can come.
We're going to talk about the fiscal year twenty-six tonight, so Ronnie, you're going to be around, right? So we'll talk about it. We-
It's on here as a priority. So, as far as this discussion goes, it's on there.
And that, and-
What the answer is, I don't know.
What I'm wondering is if it needs to be re-engineered, because this is three times in almost a year.
And the discussion about the trailers, I know, I think there's a lot to this. It even involves fire. If you go back behind those trailers, there's that field area, BJ says we own all that. Problem is, we need equipment up there, hence the stuff we're looking at getting, to clear that brush out, and maybe there, that's going to be more opportunities for perhaps renting or something. I don't know. But that's something, there's a lot of things that overlap here, that I think we'll bring back to you all to flush out.
Along that line, I, I wouldn't mind having the EDC look at that property.
Well, let's first figure out what we do with what we've got. And then, if it is an opportunity, then let's turn it over, or, or open it up. Do we want to move on to communication? Do we want to take a quick five-minute break? I heard a big sigh over there.
No, let's, let's-
Keep going. Okay. Sounds good to me. Okay. So, some of the stuff we said about the governance model, that will fall under communications and transparency. And who wants to take this one to lead the way? Anybody? I'll do it. I'm just thinking of myself.
I mean, I'll take some of it. How about that?
I'll do it.
So, three, three point one-one, I know that we were trying to figure out a way to add to the website, to make it a better system for reporting broken playground equipment or maintenance requests. I think we did do that. I think probably need some tweaking. You know, I still would like to figure out a way to do QR codes at our parks, to where if there's a broken piece of equipment, someone could scan a QR code. You know, that's a double-edged sword there, like, but it, I think it would be helpful. And City Temple's doing stuff like that, and other municipalities are too. Timely response to all residents communications, and no non-responses. You know, I think, I'm not really privy to how the city is actually responding quickly. In my opinion, seems like we're doing a pretty good job, but opinions vary, so I could be totally off on that one. I mean, I think we probably could grow there a little bit, and we will grow.
I took that out. Actually, I took the last couple out, but I did add something on the website. Update all areas and make information more easily accessible. And then, making the website our official communications, as opposed to some things are on social media, some things are on the official website. I mean, I think if you just, not everybody's on social media. If you just go to the website, it should have everything on there.
And now, many websites will automatically, like if you post something into the website, it will post it to social media for you, to where if you're just in that one interface. So, you know, I think we, we do need to look at, maybe making a more robust website. I also think the people that have been doing that for the last years are doing that as volunteers and doing a great job. So it's like, you know, we've given them tools-
Not the highest priority, but we want to keep it on the radar.
It needs to be on the radar, for sure.
And I also said, evaluate communication or lack of communication methods to residents in volatile times. Take appropriate action, like organizational changes, Code Red events, weather alerts, road repairs, boil water notices, trash and debris pickup changes, et cetera. I think the whole communication about how we're, our decisions are impacting residents and what they need to be aware of, we just need to look at that. That's why I don't have an answer. I just said, evaluate it.
I, I can tell you, the complaints I hear, one is, the front desk, and now we're short-staffed, but the front desk says, leave a message, and they'll call you back. They don't. And the website is just, we need a new website. It's unacceptable.
I think you're right. I mean, it's a matter of priorities. I mean, I do agree with you.
Understood.
I think we should take off timely responses to all residents, but then no non-responses. I think we should take that off.
I just deleted it completely.
Oh, the whole thing?
Yeah. I really think that we're doing a better job. I think social media's doing a better, better job. Night is on there with the official city, on Facebook, with the official city notifications. The website seems to be a lot easier, even though it's difficult to find things on there if you're looking for something in particular. But, yeah, I just took that off.
Our new mayor's trying to be as-
Yeah, our new mayor is awesome.
Well, I read, read your thing on Facebook where you went through the meetings today and told people, you told the residents exactly what was happening, and that was good.
I like the Confucius quote.
Yeah.
How do you pronounce that? Jimfusius. Confucius, eh? Let's move on to safety and emergency preparedness. Are you guys anything else under communication? What else did I have? Oh, yeah, we're going to have to evaluate the new law of agendas and packets being posttimely.
The microphones are wearing us out still, guys.
Yeah, let's add that, and that is-
It'll be short-lived. We're still waiting for, was it two more? They're on back orders.
So evaluate options on, yeah, but I don't want the answer. I want what the, what we want done. We want to evaluate the clarity of the audio of our meetings. What, how do you want to say that?
I don't know if we need it on, if they got new mics ordered.
Aye, it's not done, guys. But, it's a problem.
I don't think it's a bad thing. There are certain things you should be doing annually. You mentioned something earlier. There's not anything wrong with evaluating it to your satisfaction. Every council that sits around this table may very well have different things that they want to see. So, evaluate it once a year, and that could be part of your governance models, policies.
You know, I want to backtrack one too, because, you know, right after the event in Curville, Dennis and I had a conversation about Code Red, and he's been proactive on trying to get a solution to get that going.
We're back. We've got it again. We've had it. We, yeah, it's, it'd be a little bit more robust than what it's been.
But we're not there yet.
No. It is.
I want to keep it on there. I just would-
Okay, what, I want to hear, Matt, Matt's going to tell us about Code Red.
All right. So on Code Red, we do have administrator access again. I am the administrator of the Code Red account at the moment. And they just went through a Code Red update, so it's two, two point oh. Code Red two point oh now, within the last several weeks, or less than a month ago. So, yes. So, Code Red is going to be something that will have to be marketed again. A lot of people don't know it, and, I mean, as far as functionality from utilities to public safety to all kinds of other things, I mean, you know, I've always said, why should we have to hand-deliver boil water notices every, to every house? But I'll leave that to, that guy to decide. But we'll have other options. But yes, we do have it back, as of Dennis's directive the other day, and it was complete. So now, we just need to develop the policy on who, how is, who's going to have administrator access and what it's going to be used for.
There's no cost. The, the cog actually has been paying for it. They pay sixty thousand a year, so we, we're back online. That's the main thing.
So if residents signed up before, will they have to sign up again?
I don't have the answer to that.
As far as a quick answer, no. Everything migrated over, minus anybody who had administrative access to the system. The access level did not migrate over. But as far as residents who are already signed up, we're there. Now, we might have to go through and, you know, make sure that we send out something when we start marketing it, to make sure that you're still a resident. But, but no, heavy mark, heavy marketing of it will have to take place.
Okay.
And again, it's something that doesn't cost us anything. I mean, it's already, it's already there. We just need to utilize it.
Some test runs.
But it really goes a long way in notifying residents, especially if it's targeted, like the boil water notices.
Well, we're, we're going to be exploring on, looking at a thing called Doppler, is that what it's called, for water? Real quick, just get the mic, because this deals with communication. I think it'd be a little bit more robust than what the residents really do need.
So what it is, is I'm in talks with another company, and it's specifically made for work orders for utilities, any kind of water emergencies, sewer emergencies, boil water notices. It's going to, will generate just residents' phone numbers. So if there's a boil water notice, it's going to be on our website, be on Facebook, but they're going to get notified on their phones. And we're in, we're in the works for that right now.
That's fantastic. Technology, got to love it. Anything else on communications? Enhance safety and emergency preparedness. I wrote down evacuation plan. We've been talking about it for probably a decade. I want to keep that on the radar. Multi-departmental wildfire prevention mitigation plan, I want to implement it. So I said, implement. Consider the near-term implementation of our hazard mitigation plan. Jimbo presented that to us a month or so ago, and it's pretty costly, but I think we need to keep it on the radar. Staffing, Dennis, of public safety services, you know, kind of the concept that, what you're talking about. I wrote that down. Keep it on the radar. Evaluate the backup generator at the public safety facility. Complete the ADA policy and guidance. Safety signage at certain roads and lakespots. Consider four-way stop at four corners before we have a tragic fatality. Underline the word "before." Evaluate foot, bike, and vehicle traffic concerns related to the new sidewalk project. That's what I had written down. Some of them are repeats, and some of them are not.
Well, when I looked at this list, I just thought, we did have a emergency. We had that big tornado last year, and I do think that our safety center and Jimbo heading, Jimbo and Shane heading up that disaster plan was an amazing job. And so, that made me feel a lot, pretty confident in our staff to be able to help us with that.
I don't think that four point six is relevant anymore, unless you're talking about a future one.
Yeah, I think we won't be able to do that one. When's the next eclipse coming here?
It'll be a while.
It'll be a while. Yeah. I, again, I didn't edit the current list. I just came up with, based on what we've talked about in the last couple years, what I thought we had accomplished. I just came up with what I think is the focus going forward.
And then, in four point seven, we're talking about tickets being issued, municipal code enforcement and fines. And I was, I think that goes back to asking Judge Wilkie to come and, you know, give us, or send a, whether it's here in person or just a manual report, in, in the future will be very helpful.
You'll be getting, just like you do with everything else, like the financials and stuff, you'll be getting monthly reports. It's not a whole lot, but I mean, the fact is, there's a lot of them that just, citizens pay the, the fines online, but you'll see the court transaction, whatever. We'll come up with a monthly report. They'll be kind of like automatically generated and provided to consumers.
Is there anything else, just sitting back for a minute and taking a breath, as far as something on you guys' radar?
I want to, real quick, address four point eight on there. Not necessarily safety signage, but as we are a lakeside community.
Oh, right.
We average five drownings a year on Lake Belton. We've had five drownings this year, so we are right on point. We still have a couple months left to go in the, the water season. So, I think that's important, to keep that one on our radar. And I know the safety center, the PD, the dive team, have all done an amazing job responding to those. We got a fantastic letter from, yeah, Sheriff Cook, thanking Oregon's Point Resort, which I'll be posting that and forwarding it to the city manager, for their efforts with the, the police officer involved drowning. So, I think it's definitely something that we need to, to hang on to. I don't know necessarily about signage and everything, wouldn't hurt, but that's, as a lakeside community, we need to keep that one on, on the forefront as well. And lake's a dangerous place, so.
Yeah, and I left that on here. I don't know if it's wearing, make sure you have enough life vests for everyone on your boat, plus a couple, or, you know, I don't know what kind of sign, safety signage we have. I know there's no jumping off cliffs.
Yeah, I think just, you know, the safety signage, I can work with, with PD on that one, but I think for the safety center in general, maybe tie in with Parks and Rec with the lake, but almost a public service campaign kind of thing.
This might be a good time to let you all know that I've just joined the Coast Guard Auxiliary, and I promise them to act as liaison with the city council if it becomes pertinent.
Oh, fantastic. Very good. So how does the Coast Guard interact with our city? I'm just curious, because it's-
The Coast Guard, well, the Coast Guard Auxiliary provides safety inspections and has safety requirements that's, that's international and national. You know, because you, you live on a boat in the summer. You're supposed to have so many life preservers, fire extinguishers. For example, something people don't know, if your boat's over twenty-seven feet, you have to have an engine compartment sign that says it's illegal to spill oil or fuel into the water. And that applies on our lake, just like it does at sea. Anyway, so I, I might be bringing some information back and forth between the Auxiliary and the council every once in a while.
Great for like our website, you know, to have a little, I don't know what you would call it, Lake Belton Corner or something.
Sure.
With those kind of reminders.
We could do that. Let me get my feet wet.
That cutoff switch that you have to have on your boat, and, yeah, yeah.
Do we have the wildfire underneath here also under strategy? Because I think wildfire urban interfaces become a major-
Well, I kind of said, implement the multi-departmental wildfire prevention and mitigation plan.
Okay. I see it.
And we've got, we've got it, and it's, now we're in the implementation phase of it. Okay.
Okay. I see it.
Okay, okay. I see it. Okay, okay. Maybe more educational, I guess, is what I was thinking.
Okay.
Yeah. The state has, they're required, they will give you any, any paperwork, science, anything to the U.S.S., like warning the public. They will give that to any municipality along the length.
Oh, that's excellent.
Yeah, we just need to request it, I guess. Yeah. Thank you.
All right. We kind of went through our plan from last year. I was wondering, do we have, would any of the department heads like to give any input to us right now, or? Any department heads want to give us any input right now?
I was going to, you know, we actually have a contact for the Coast Guard Auxiliary. So we spoke to them about doing some different trainings in public safety, different.
Okay, okay.
We are currently, as we've done, just video with Texas Parks and Wildlife, we are, we are active in the, not only the, the.
Okay.
They also have all the paperwork and all, sorry, the whole list of it. The other day, they were there checking boats, and they weren't pulling up the boats and gassing up, they were asking for the license, they were going through everything, like the whole wall full of information that's still there already.
In the Marina.
They give it to a chip.
Okay.
Signs, they give signs for safety. So.
So, do you want to add something to the plan that talks about how we want to communicate that to residents, or how we want to market it? Or we've got all these resources, I think it's just a matter of bringing it together and then letting residents know?
That's what you said about the, putting on their headsets, like they have a little thing on the corner.
Okay, so evaluate.
Put it like that.
Evaluate, like, Belton.
Yeah, it's a little, what you say, well, don't.
I don't remember.
They do, they do hold, they do hold water safety days at least once a year, where they hold a water safety education day, where they, where they, where they, where they, you know, children and, and adults on water safety. And so that, that, they can capitalize if you bring it to our, you know, the larger part area, like Central Lake Park, where it's, and.
Okay, a Lake Belton communications slash education for residents? Something like that? Okay. Nida can wordsmith it. Okay. And then as far as next steps on these, anybody else want to add anything?
You know, I want to actually just be sort of a cheerleader, honestly, because we had these four, they were pretty ambitious. We had a tornado in the midst of these four, and while nothing is perfect, we have made strides, and I appreciate that, Dennis.
Absolutely.
I know it's, has not been easy, and our staff, it hasn't been easy, but we have, it's, it's pretty neat to actually look at it.
Look back.
And say, we're close, we're close, we're close. We got there.
Moving in the right direction.
Right, that's pretty neat.
Yeah, thank you. That's, I mean, it is good to reflect for a minute, because we're always be the, next, 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 but say, hey, we have accomplished some things.
I want to highlight something. It's all right, Mayor, Council. Normally, with disasters, you would undeclare the disaster, and we would have done this months ago, but the problem is, we have not got the last reimbursement from FEMA. I ain't giving anybody an excuse not to give us that last bit, because it could be a two-hundred-and-fifty thousand or better. So when that's last received from the, and we have it, and cash it, and put it in the bank, we'll definitely come back before you with, with the necessary documents to go ahead and withdraw from that emergency posture. But they're very persnickety, and I don't want to give them any reason to, to not give us what we've already applied for. So that's what we're waiting on. Other than that, permitting's back up. We're still, we're back doing the normal process like we did before the storm.
What is the situation with the pit and the burning these days?
TCQ has standards that if you're going to have vegetative debris brought in, you have to bring it in. You can't have residents come in and drop it off and burn on site. Those days are gone. But what we can do is, we're trying to set up beyond the capability we have now, we're trying to set it up where we can collect it faster and dispose of it faster, and that's what we're working on now.
You can burn, what, three days a week?
As long as, I think it's pretty much as fast as you can burn it. I don't think there's any.
Very good.
But the problem is, is there's no more, we have to do curbside pickup, or we can have them put them in the bins. I think we talked about that, and then collect some of that, but really, the curbside's the fastest way. We just need a way to collect it faster and move on down the line.
And that's what your new machine is going to do.
That's what it is. Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good.
So Nida, as you pull together like a draft new document for us, you know, if you have any questions or can't read something, or, I did take a bunch of notes, I'll be happy to work with you on it. And then we can just get it out, or you can just get it out to all the council, and then maybe we can get it on another agenda to review it and approve it. So we have a plan.
Because we're going to need to move a little bit faster on, not faster, we need to bring the proposed budget to you next week. There's a preliminary tax that we need to bring before you to consider public hearing, and then, then accept that as a preliminary tax rate. And then, of course, there'll be an actual adopted tax rate later. But this plan needs to be, if, if it doesn't get in there during the proposed section of it, if you will, it, when it's done, it can be incorporated on the annual adopt, when we actually adopt it, or you adopt it, later in the month or first part of September.
Okay.
The process needs to be done preferably before the fifteenth of September, based off of what the tax appraisal district prefer, given all the stuff they need to do on their end. So I don't think it'd be a problem, as long as we get next week moving, I think we'll be all right.
And I do not want to preempt the budget process with this. I was just, next steps.
Well, normally, we want it in there.
Yeah, I know, I know. But the budget comes first, and I, I don't mean to be saying I'm.
No, I didn't mean it that way.
This is over everything. No.
I didn't mean it that way, but since you're.
You're willing to help.
This is actually, if you're going to do it, include it in the budget, then that's why it's, this, we're talking twenty-four, or, sorry, twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year, start using fiscal year. It's an annual review of it, and it kind of gets everybody kind of in a, in a habit of doing the same thing every year, moving forward, instead of just a calendar year.
Okay. Sounds good. Yeah, that's what I was thinking, a working document. Yep. Okay. Okay. If you need any help, I'll be glad to help. Okay. Okay.
Okay. Counsel, anything else to add before we wrap this one? Dennis, anything you want to toss in there?
No, sir.
Okay. We will go ahead and adjourn. I got sixteen forty.